Certainly. Trenton City Council Regular Meeting, December 2nd, 2025 is now called. The order, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known it was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano. For the record, I believe Councilwoman Feliciano will be en route to the meeting. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee. One moment, Councilwoman.
I'm the only one that.
Once again, please.
Present.
Thank you. For the record, Councilwoman Frisbee is present via telephone. Councilman Harrison is excused from this meeting. Councilwoman Williams is remote.
Present y presente.
Thank you. And Council President Gonzalez.
Presente.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Edward Colagi, Legislative Council.
Oh, she is.
Thank you. And Mr. Westbridge's City Attorney. Thank you. For the record, Councilwoman Feliciano is now present. As I had announced prior that she was en route. And at this time, Madam President, if you'd like, I will read the invocation.
Yes, please.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, at this time, we do not have any presentations or recognitions this evening. If you would like to move to public comment for agenda items only.
Yes, please.
Could I have the the clipboard for public comment for agenda items only, agenda and docket items only? Um, to the public, you have five minutes to address anything, any matter on the docket at this time or the agenda. At this time, Madam President, I have nobody listed for public comment for agenda items only. Uh, if you'd like to move forward to ask for a motion for approval of the minutes this evening of September 4th, September 10th, and October 7th.
Yes, well, we have a motion to approve the minutes, so moved, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
I did, Councilwoman, thank you. Councilwoman Williams, I heard you as well. That's a yes. Thank you. And Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications, petitions, and reports.
Maybe have a motion to approve, so moved.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, that brings us to ordinances at this time for second reading and public hearing.
Yes.
Ordinance 25-130, bond ordinance providing for phase six of, right, yeah, of the lead service line, phase six of lead service line replacement program in the Trenton Water Works Service Area by the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $20 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $20 million in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Beautiful. Motion carried. Ordinance 25-136, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the Trenton Water Works by the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $27,343,200, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $27,343,200 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve. Uh, should we approve?
We have a motion to second prior discussion.
Yes, please. Anybody a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, uh, Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, sorry for jumping the gun. Um, so I'd like to ask, uh, if Mr. Sample is in the room, Director Sample. If he could talk about, uh, collectively, uh, this ordinance and the next one, 25, 137, if last week, need to break them up individually. And I'd like to, uh, ask about if he could highlight what replacements and repairs will be made. Outside the obvious, I know in 136 talks about the replacement of the roof, which I believe has been completed. And then also, uh, variable frequency drives listed, et cetera. But just so the public has a better idea of what, um, these bonds will actually be paying for any improvements, because there's so much information and, you know, potential misinformation about repairs that DEP is demanding, and I'd like to make sure we get a clearer picture for folks. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Director Sample, Trenton Water and Sewer.
Thank you, Director.
Good evening, Director.
So th- this bonds cover a variety of things. The first is the HVAC and roof repairs, yes. We have done immediate repairs to the to the leaks that were really bad. All the roofs have not repaired yet, not replaced yet. This will cover the entire plant, the remainder of the plant. But the ones that were in immediate needed immediate replacement, those were done. And then we have the whole HVAC system that is shot that we have, that has to be replaced.
Okay, and do you have rough ideas, sir, uh, when they will be completed? And is that work that can happen over the winter?
No, that's, this can take much longer. It's a three-year, um, project. And we can do it in segments. Um, also, tonight, we have ordinance for the engineering part of, of this, it's gonna last over the next three years.
Okay, so, um, these items are some of the items that the, uh, State Department of Environmental Protection has mentioned uh, with that. So if we, if and when this gets completed, those, um, those issues will be taken off of the list of, uh, problems that DEP has said has made our water works on the verge of catastrophe.
That's correct, Council.
Okay, that's great to hear, sir. I'm really glad to hear that. Um, are there any other repairs you could share with us or any other purchases, acquisitions?
Yeah, so this, the other part of this bond is for the, um, electrical improvements. Um, over the years, we've had problems with our connections with the PSENG. And this is to upgrade our system so we could cater for whenever we have brung out or blackouts. So we won't have any break in service.
Okay, um, when is the last time that has happened before, uh, Hurricane Sandy or since?
We frequently have blackouts that will, that cause the plants to shut down immediately. And we don't have that capability to restart much faster that, like we should be. So this is gonna rectify most of these problems.
Okay, uh, and is that also a multi-year, um, work order that would need to take?
Yes, we just did an assessment with the, with the, um, consultant, uh, that was hired by the DEP to go over all our, our electrical needs throughout the plant. And they made a recommendation, and this is where we're gonna act. This funding is gonna help us act to fix all those problems that we don't anticipate having major problems. But yes, we are working in step with all the DEP, um, things that they cited us for to fix them.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear, too. And then how soon would the electrical work be able to begin?
Well, so I had a meeting with the DEP just this week. We have to complete the roof and HVAC part first before we even get into the electrical, um, upgrades.
That makes sense. Okay, um, and so I guess as far as a rough timeline, would you be able to, to give us a guesstimate how long the roof might take total? Or are you expecting it would take that whole three-year period?
My wish is to finish it within two years, but, um, depends on how, um, it goes with the whole bid process and the procurement process. That's why we put in a estimated time of three years.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll hope that it does go faster. Uh, one of the things I'm very proud of our council is that we've tried to work as much hand-to-hand with TWW in approving your expenditures and the issuance of the bonds. And, uh, of course, I mean, I know you're, you realize how anxious we and many of our fellow citizens are.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Director, uh, Sample. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Council President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So just real quick, um, all of this sounds good, excuse me, with us getting this together and everything. Just asking, um, where, not for you. Where are we with the ad hoc committee for council, um, with regarding this? Because I think that these ordinances and everything, and then these conversations, and then hearing back and forth with DEP, um, would be more appropriate or fruitful, too, before the ad hoc committee to have the conversation so that everybody, um, that was designated to be a part of would be able to weigh in and have conversation um, about where we are moving forward with this, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman, um, CVP and, uh, uh, Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg have definitely signed on. Since there wasn't a third one, I've recently signed on, but we're working out the schedules to when we can actually meet with the director and everybody else.
Okay, so we.
Like to get it consistent.
Yeah, so we have our three then.
Yeah, 'cause no one else signed up for the third one, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Council President. I just wanna make sure um, that we are moving forward with that, um, so that way we can gain some traction. And while Councilwoman Williams, um, thank you for asking all those questions about the timeline and everything. I just become even more concerned because you're talking about three years and this year's. Like, how much time do we really have with what DEP is talking about and what's coming down the line? So while three years might sound nice, is it, is it realistic to say that it's even gonna make a difference um, for us, which is also why it's important for the ad hoc committee to come together so that we all have a true understanding of what is happening as we're getting into more of these bonds and everything else to kind of make it make sense, right?
Council President, may I?
Uh, BA Richardson, yes.
Thank you. Do you mind, Councilwoman Feliciano, if I answer your question? Thank you. Um, I'm not gonna say unfortunately, but we need to continue to operate the utility like what it is right now. It's ours. And, uh, we need to take every single step to, for the utility to continue to be ours. So, uh, when, when DEP said you need to do this series of improvements to the plant, we immediately started to, to, uh, we initiated the process of getting the money for it, right? Um, uh, the first thing that we needed to do was to do the study with our, uh, bond, bond council so that we can get the money. But we went through a very lengthy process with DCA because DCA was basically under the opinion, is this worthy? Can, you know, we don't know what is gonna happen to the utility. And my point is, if you have official information that you can tell me that we should not be doing this, then tell me officially that we shouldn't. But until I get that information, we need to proceed with this. And DCA actually consulted several times with DEP uh, before they approve our waiver to go through, um, issuing the bond. And, uh, that's where we are. I really, we cannot just throw, you know, the towel and say, this is gonna happen, because we haven't received any official information as of what is gonna happen. So we will continue to fight as, you know, it is our utility. And, uh, we hope that it will continue to be.
Right, as we should. Thank you for that. Again, with the ad hoc committee forming and having those intimate conversations, though, that would then give the members of the committee the seat at the table to have the conversations and dig a little bit deeper to then bring back to us, the collective, that we can weigh in and it makes sense to us, right, as far as what's going on. So thank you for your explanation.
Sure, thanks. Thank you, BA Richardson. Um, Mr. Garcia, I think we're ready for a vote.
Certainly. Vice Pres- roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-137, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 acquisitions and improvements to the sewer utility, excuse me, to the sewer utility of the City of Trenton in the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $4,075,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,075,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-139, ordinance amending Chapter 89 of the Code of the City of Trenton, entitled Fire Hydrants. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-140, ordinance amending Chapter 193 of the Code of the City of Trenton, entitled Parks and Recreation Areas. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Madam President.
Uh, CVP.
Thank you. Um, can we have someone come and explain what this ordinance means for the changes that they're proposing to amend?
Good evening, Director Harris.
Good evening.
This ordinance, like the rest that we have on the docket, for me, the, um, are just, a lot of our stuff is outdated and we're updating it. Um, some of these entrances aren't open to the public. Maple Avenue entrance is not, it says that it's an entrance just for my staff. It's not the case, so what we're doing is, I'm reviewing ordinances related to my department and then making them, uh, you know, modernizing them for, like a better word.
So they're going to be open for public use?
No, no, Hill Vista entrance has not been open and will not be open. Maple Avenue entrance is open as an exit.
Exit.
But in the ordinance, it says it will, it's only to be used for, uh, recreation vehicles. It's just bringing us in compliance with what we're actually doing.
Okay. And, uh, the first part of it, the outer drive to the Deer paddock?
Yep.
Padlock?
Yeah, that's, that's, that entrance is closed.
Okay, and that's the one from Hill Vista?
Mm-hmm, correct.
All the way at, where the big house is.
Yeah, not the entrance to the outer loop, which is open when you have big events, so you have the softball games.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just needed you to clarify that for those that live in that area and understand.
Nothing's changing for anybody who lives in the area. It's just business as usual.
Okay, thank you.
Council President. Oh, Councilwoman Feliciano.
I'm sorry, just real quick, I'm sorry, Director. So the outer drive to the Deer padlock, you crossed out, and the Hill Vista Boulevard entrance shall be open to the traffic during the approved things. So where's the outer drive to the padlock? Located where? Where's it at?
It is, it's Hill Vista. It's right where that big mansion is on the corner that is always closed. Yeah, that's where that is.
The, the gate thing.
Yeah, mm-hmm, the gate that they keep hitting.
So how come? I mean, just so like, so people know exactly where this is moving forward, and it, it didn't click until Councilwoman that just said it. I would think that just a slight amendment could be the outer drive to the Deer padlock located at the, at Hill Vista shall be open to traffic, just so we know, right? Cause, you know, you know where it is, but then what happens if somebody else doesn't know where it is?
If you would like to amend it, I don't think that's ever gonna be an issue, but we can amend it.
Located at Hill Vista?
Yeah, can I, can I make a motion to, it's, can I, can I make a motion to amend? Um, the ordinance to say the outer drive to the Deer padlock located at Hill Vista Boulevard shall be open to traffic, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
You can't answer that.
That's a motion, is there? That's a motion.
But thank, no, I'm making a motion. It's all like a motion. Yeah, so I'm motioning. I'm, I'm motioning the amendment.
A second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, Madam President. Quick question, 'cause the way it reads, the outer drive to the Deer padlock and the Hill Vista Boulevard entrance. So if we're saying, that sounds like those are two different entrances, but then in the amendment, we're saying the outer drive to the Deer padlock located at Hill Vista Boulevard is the same. So it's not two separate ones that's worded here? That's why we're, okay.
That's why we.
I'm a South Trenton girl, okay. Just, just asking, thank you. So amending it to located at Hill Vista Boulevard shall be open to traffic during city-approved special events.
Okay. No problem. So, did you take the vote for the amendment?
Yes. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried.
That's for the amendment.
Ask for the amendment. And to, uh, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the resolution?
Maybe have a motion to approve 25-140 with the amendment included.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Uh, um, uh,
huh?
Sorry.
Okay.
Uh, BA Richardson wants to speak to this.
Um, we need another correction on the body of the ordinance. Is Deer paddock, not padlock?
Drive to the Deer Park, not padlock?
Paddock.
Oh, paddock.
Not padlock.
Paddock.
It's B-A-D-D-O.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So do we got amendment, we got amendment, too? Maybe have a motion to approve with 25-140 with the amendments, with the corrected spelling, and located at Hill Vista Boulevard.
Stipple, thank you.
Thank you.
So we had a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So we are at roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 25-141, ordinance amending Chapter 193 of the Code of the City of Trenton, entitled Fees. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
Maybe have a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
It was me.
I mean, Councilwoman Feliciano, sorry.
Thank you. That, Director Harris? Hello again. Okay, just a couple of questions, please. Under 77-9, letter A, you said the, the permits for use of planned fields in the park required to issue by the Department of Recreation and Culture. Permit applications must be received six weeks prior to the date of the event. So the question I have is, is that the absolute stop? Is there any allowance for anything after six weeks, like they could pay an extra fee to do this? Um, can they go up to four weeks out possibly? Without exception, it's six weeks for everybody, all the time, every event?
Every event.
Okay. Next page. Um, under letter C, just a question, a park security guard is required for the people, the hourly rate is determined by the minimum salary, blah, blah, blah. Who's required to pay for that?
The permit holder.
Who, who's required to pay for the, so under the park security guard, that fee is included in the permit?
Yes.
Right, so the person that's applying for the permit is the person that's paying for the security?
Correct.
That would be there, okay. The same thing with the portable restrooms?
Yes.
Okay. I think, 'cause you know how sometimes people misunderstand things? And are like, well, y'all should cover that. We shouldn't have to cover that. I think maybe if it would just be, you know, to be payable by the permit holder.
Yes, well, remember, this, this is just the ordinance.
But to that point.
So our application
Right.
is detailed, and it makes it clear exactly what your responsibility is.
Okay, so then in that case, you know how like when we have the MOUs and stuff like that, and then they give us the sample MOU? Could we have the attached application as an addendum to this ordinance? So that way, when people see it, we, we have everything that's, that's covered and mentioned there so that there is no question.
So what we'll do is, we're gonna, now that we have the, assuming these pass, once we update all of our applications, I will provide it to the clerk as an addendum to this ordinance.
Um, and then it says, events with 20 or more attendees are required to obtain a certificate of liability of insurance. Is there a certain amount, or is that also explained on the application, the different? Okay, so this is why the application attachment would be important, so then that way people can see. And then I have to ask you all these questions. Um, the floats.
Yes.
Wait a minute, the rental fee for use of, so what's the, what's the baseline cost of the item? So we're renting out floats and everything?
Yeah, we're not, we're not renting out floats. Um, but we, um, in the actual application, it details the prices of various items.
Okay.
And it's at the, it's at, it's at the discretion of the administration, because again, it's based on a generally, our guys are working Saturdays and Sundays to provide these services to the public. So we need to have the ability to update these prices when we need to.
But one here, it says that you shall collect the rental fee for the use of city-owned floats, stages, or the wenger units, so floats are no longer an option?
As of now, we don't rent them, but it could, it could open back up in the future. As of now, we do not, but the door is not completely closed, no. The Guatemalans had a parade a year before last, and they used the floats, for example.
Okay, so everything, like you said, will be on the, on the application, excuse me, that'll be submitted? Okay, thank you. I'm good with that. They'll, he'll submit the application as the addendum to, that'll highlight all of that stuff. Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Yes.
Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna make an amendment. So, can you strike floats?
So we're not renting?
We're not renting.
So how does someone get a float if they wanted to have a parade?
Sorry, Council, President Council, we really don't rent the floats because those are vehicles, right? And it's a huge liability for the city when we rent them out. About four, five years ago, we rented one of our floats, and the float almost came apart in the middle of the highway.
I remember that.
And so, yes.
But I thought they're, aren't they driven by city employees, or no?
They are driven by city employees, but it is a big liability for the city when we rent them out. And I think that the certificate that we required from individuals renting the parks, it's not gonna be enough to pay the liability that we incur by the floats, by renting the floats. So when people have parades, they go somewhere else and rent their floats and pay a lot of money to get them, but I, I don't think that the city should do that.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I think if they're willing to pay, and we have them as the city, and it's a city organization, I think they should be able to rent a float, but.
Yeah, but the city, you know, most people, let, let's be honest. Most people will come to the city and they want to rent the floats for free. I want to rent it, but I don't want to pay you two thousand dollars, right? I want to, can the city hook me up?
Right, but if we have a fee attached and they don't wanna pay the fee, I think then that, they, they just don't get the float, but if they're willing to pay a fee.
With all due respect, Councilwoman, the liability is really big for the city when we rent floats out. If you, if you look into other municipalities, they do not, they probably don't even have floats. We have floats because we have them for the last thirty years. And we put them aside because they weren't disrepair. We probably repair all of them now for our own events, but I don't think that the city should be put under, under that liability. I don't even, you know, I don't, I don't even want to make them available to anybody because it is a problem for the city.
All right, anyone else? CVP, you got something? No, you was ready to roll call. Cause I saw you later, I wasn't sure. Just thinking about it. Yeah, I, I just don't agree with it, but go ahead.
So, Council, so are we, are we doing the amendment now to strike floats?
If that's, if anyone wants to put that up for an amendment?
Well, the administration is putting it up, asking for the amendment to be made, right?
Yes, some, we are. So someone would have to motion that.
Okay, so I make a motion to strike floats from the ordinance?
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes. For now. It's the second meeting.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
No.
Noted. Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
Maybe have a motion to approve the amended ordinance.
So moved, second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Noted, motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-two, ordinance amending ordinance twenty-five dash one oh six to remove the conveyance of thirteen Trent Street to Brittany Littlejohn. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-three. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as three twenty-three North Olden Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block two one nine zero seven, lot one, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to three twenty-three North Olden LLC for the sale price of one hundred thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Madam President?
Council, by, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg, I don't know why I'm off today, I'm sorry.
It's December. Thank you. I just wanted to state for the record, as has been clear, my stance on these property sales, since they've been introduced, I just want to be uniform in my stance on them. Again, I don't see what we've been asking for in terms of how these properties are being sold, and how they're being put up, and, and cost, and square footage, and things of that nature, these are second reading. So I just want to say that my stance on them has changed. BA Richardson, you standing up, I don't know if you have something to add to that?
Yes, I do. Council President, I've just, I just wanted to clarify that in this case, the sale of this property followed a different path than the other properties. The city actually put an RFI for this property a while ago, and we received, I think, two proposals. We discussed them with the H D Subcommittee a while ago. And then it was, actually, re-approved, I would say, for, by the, by the Subcommittee a while ago. This was through an RFI process. It wasn't the regular, we put a proposal out, just like we did with the hotel property and other properties, and that's how this was procured. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. So for clarification, this one's specific to twenty-five dash one forty-three?
Correct.
It's a different process?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
Thank you. This was included in one of our, in our vetting process earlier in the year, after the RFI responses that was received and vetted by the H D Aha Committee, and it was included in one of the reports that I had sent out to council a few months ago. It was just taking a while, I guess, for them to get through the contract phase of everything after they heard from us, and to get on the docket. So this one was fully vetted by the H D Aha Committee.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to add, from my mistake, I think this was at our March or April meeting when Mr. Liston was still with the city.
Okay.
So it's been that long. But I also did have a question for BA Richardson or Mr. Beach, if he's there. If they have any type of an update that they can provide, I know, you know, the ordinance will carry the sale, so nothing can begin, but if they could provide any additional information, cause this will be a really important development to, in our East Trenton neighborhood in the city. So a lot of folks will be excited to see something happen with this long dormant building.
Absolutely, Council, Councilwoman Williams. We will have more information available for the Subcommittee and eventually for the entire council. But my understanding is that this firm is working on developing their plans and everything, but what we are doing tonight is basically formalizing the process of sale and assigning them as the redevelopment agency for that property.
Okay, and then I guess my follow-up would be that they would still be working towards the idea of apartments?
Yes. Yes, they are talking about, I think, one hundred and ten residential units. But you will have all, yes, you will have all the information, the drawings, the plans, and everything else at a later time.
Okay, we'll look forward to that for council. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. BA, BA, really quick, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it, you said it will include parking for those units?
Yes, they, they include parking. I am not sure how many parking, but that was part of their initial proposal as well. They are actually purchasing additional properties around this one, just to accommodate parking.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Mr. Garcia, I think we're ready.
Certainly. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg? Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty-seven Poplar Street, identified on the city tax map as block two one four zero three, lot thirty-two, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C to the Real Property LLC for the sale price of one thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve? Maybe have a mo- motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
No.
Councilwoman Frisbee? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-five. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as fifty-five Sandy Can Drive, and identified on the city tax map as block three four four zero four, lot five, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight twelve thirteen C. Excuse me. To Marcus and Julia Tyson for the sale price of seventy-five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Noted. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg? Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee? Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-six, an ordinance amending chapter one seventy-six of the Code of the City of Trenton entitled parades. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams, I mean, damn, Feliciano.
I'm not even there.
I know, I miss you, Mr., at the Council Williams, that's what it is.
Director? I gotta call him up. Just a quick question. Letter B. It says not less than four weeks?
Right.
Before the date to do a parade? Not six?
No.
Four weeks is enough to do a whole big parade through the city?
This is an agreement that we have with the police department. We have the application. Once we get the application and it's correct, we send it to the Director of Police, and then his team looks at it, reviews it, and makes a determination. So four weeks is what we agreed upon.
If it's six weeks for permit?
So I think, how, how, so they have to have it in to you four weeks before the date of the parade? Four weeks before, and then you take it and give it to the police department? And what do they do with it?
They, they review it, and they make a determination. Street closures are handled by their department.
So again, I, I, I always think that more is better. So like, can't we put something in there that says they do it four weeks, it's then sent to the police department, you know, for final approval, something like that?
Steve Wilson, Police Director. I, I think that's probably better, six weeks. And I think probably we should do something like, the completed application should be turned in six weeks prior to the event. That way it would give Paul's team time to, to man the event, and also, also make the get, the same, same thing, to man the event. Six weeks lead time is, is, is good enough to do, especially when we have the bigger parades.
Right, okay. So that's what I was thinking with that, yeah. So thank you so much, gentlemen. So I'd like to make a motion to amend letter B to say not less than six weeks before the date on which it is proposed to conduct the parade.
So moved.
Second.
That was.
The motion was from Feliciano, the second was?
Gonzalez.
Got it, thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg? Councilwoman Frisbee has dropped off from the meeting. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
Maybe have a motion to approve the amended ordinance twenty-five one forty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-seven, ordinance authorizing the execution of amendment of an amendment to disposition agreement and the sale of city-owned properties to Vista Center Development LLC. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Maybe have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. I'm a little bit confused on this one, please. So they entered into, they entered into the designate, designation agreement October eighteenth, two thousand and seven, right? And then, well, they gave the exclusive development rights to this person, October eighteenth, in twenty, in two thousand and seven. And then, in April seventeenth of two thousand and eight, the disposition agreement was entered into exclusive status for a year that, that had started June twelfth, two thousand and seven. And then, there were a lot of delays from two thousand and seven to twenty twenty-five, and then there was legal challenges, and something was dismissed, and I just wanna know, and then there was like these amendments and everything that happened that keeps bringing us up to now. That's a long time from two thousand and seven till now, for all of this to be happening, for this LLC to hold exclusive rights to develop this. Also, there's no formation documentation of the LLC. I know at this time, we didn't ask for all of that, but I know that we've been asking for certain things moving forward, just so that we can get a true understanding of what's happening. So if somebody could just explain what, what's happening? Why are we, why was this allowed? Why is this, this a long time from two thousand and seven until today to be doing this?
Yes, Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano, this matter was tied up in a challenge by another developer. It was challenged in Superior Court, Appellative Division. Then it went to the Appellative Division.
Then it went to the Appellate Division and it actually ended up to the New Jersey Supreme Court who ultimately denied certiorari. So there was that that delay was because it was, it went through every appeal that it could possibly go through. And that appeal was finally ruled on by the New Jersey Supreme Court this year. So there was nothing that we could do because everything was on, in, stayed pursuant to court order. So essentially what we're doing is revive, hmm? Right, the court, the court is, the court, the, the, the wheels of justice churn very slowly. And we literally just got the order this year. So as soon as we got it, we put it back in. Essentially, we're doing just reviving, revising it because nothing could be done during that challenge period while it was in the Superior Court, Appellate Court, and then Jersey Supreme Court.
Okay, thank you for that, Director. Thank you, Council President.
No problem. Councilwoman Williams, did you still have a question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So my question along those lines, but this is being the Bell Telephone Building that opened up for apartment residential units. So along the way, it would have been nice to have an idea what the amendments were a little more clearly. But when it says towards the end, on the end of third paragraph, from the end of page two, whereas pursuant to the disposition agreement, the city agreed to sell all the, the city properties as detailed and listed on exhibit B attached here to, which we don't have. Whereas disposition agreement further provides in the event redevelopment is unable to acquire any privately owned property needed for a development project, the city shall acquire such properties and transfer it to the redeveloper for nominal consideration at the cost and expense of the redeveloper. And whereas the privately owned properties to be acquired by redeveloper are those detailed in the original disposition agreement, yada, yada, yada. So being that this project was completed a good while ago at this point, what, if you could share what the city properties were that were given to the developer? And then when it says that in the event the redevelopers unable to acquire any privately owned property needed for the development project, the city shall acquire such properties and transfer it to the redeveloper on the end of, towards the end of page two. What does that mean going forward? To my understanding, they were completely done with this project, though there are kind of a sea of parking lots around the building still?
I feel like you're talking about two separate things. We're talking about the Vista Transit Center near the train station, not the Bell Cell Building. That's two
Yeah, cuz it's, well, on the front page it says it's now located at two sixteen East State Street. So that is just, that is just the headquarters for Vista Center Development LLC.
Okay. Yes, the, the properties that we're referring to and the fact that I will work with HED to get you those parcels and that map that should have been completed, but there are two very small parcels, I believe. One has a billboard on it and another one has a, there, there are two billboard sections. If the developer is not able to acquire them by way of a private sale, then the city, because it is in a redevelopment area and it is a re-part of redevelopment project, we have the ability to basically take those, pay the owner best in use value for that, so that there can be one contiguous property for redevelopment. But the, again, the only amendment to this is changing the date because the date had since expired as a result of the appeals before the courts.
Okay, thank, I apologize for my confusion, but that's where it kinda came from. Being that a lot of that property around Bell Cell is not developed yet. So we're really not talking a lot of land in the train station redevelopment center at this point that the city still owns?
No, there, the city doesn't own, well, the city doesn't own any of them right now. The two, two spots that are referenced in there that the developer is attempting to buy and by way of a private sale, again, they're just two billboards that are needed because we need that contiguous property. My, my understanding is that that sale should be successful, but if it is not, we have the ability to take those properties under our redevelopment powers to be able to have it redeveloped as an entirety and not have any break in the, in the project.
Okay. Now, thank you very much, Mr. Bridges. And, you know, going forward, if we can always get those exhibits, I know sometimes that's painful with photocopying, but it's, it is really helpful.
No, you should, you should have had that. You will have that before the next reading of this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam President.
CVP.
Thank you. I wanted to stay on that part. Mr. Bridges, Director Bridges, do you mind elaborating a little bit more on the two parcels that you're referencing as a part of this? Now, you mentioned that the developer is, is trying to pursue it, but the disposition legal issues prevented on from being able to acquire them in a private sale. Then you mentioned the city shall acquire such properties and transfer it to the redeveloper. Why would we do that?
So he could redevelop it. It's, it's part of the, it's part of the property that they're redeveloping. It's, it's, again, two billboards on the far side of the train station that must be acquired in order to put the structure up that they need, unless they build it around the billboard, but they, they, they need the whole property.
The, the billboards you're talking about in that circle? On Greenwood and Clinton? That, that dead-end circle, those billboards?
I have to defer to HED. I'm kinda stepping in, telling you the legal challenges and what happened with respect to the, changing the dates and what, what had, why they were. I think what would be helpful to Councilwoman Williams' point is once you have the drawings and and the, the, basically the, the project as it's intended, you'll be able to see the two properties that may be either acquired privately by way of a sale or by way of eminent domain condemnation. The reason why that could not happen now, again, because of the appeal and because of the fact that the redevelopment deal had expired, the redeveloper didn't have the authority to negotiate those terms, didn't have the authority to do anything until the court ultimately ruled. And even after the court ruled, we still had to revise the redevelopment agreement to give the developer simply the authority to enter into these negotiations.
Okay. I don't see exhibit B on here with any of these properties listed. I don't know how my colleagues are feeling, but I would suggest that we table this into the next meeting pending we receive those.
Exhibit A, I mean exhibit B.
Yes.
Is this the?
So that we can make a full education decision?
This is second.
Then I, I, that's, that's not a problem. We'll table it until you have those documents.
I understand a second reading, but
Yeah, if it's first reading, I would say let's go, but the second reading, we can table it until you get those, the information you're looking for.
Okay. So you're making a motion to table?
Yes, I'm like
Why don't, why don't I just pull it until you, until we get that information? That way you don't have to vote to untable it.
Thank you.
So does that reset the second reading back to first reading?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so pulled by administration. Madam President, those are all the ordinances for second reading. We move down to resolutions. Are there any resolutions that you or the council wish to extract from a potential consent agenda this evening?
Council President?
Hold on one second. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Twenty-five four twenty-four.
Four twenty-four.
Just a quick question. Three eighty-six. Four twenty-five. Four fifty-two. Thank you.
Four fifty-two. Council President?
Yes, one second.
Page seven. Okay, got it. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
I also have twenty-five three eighty-six and twenty-five four thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-five four two five.
There's gonna be, okay.
Thank you. Twenty-five four five five. And then twenty-five four three seven.
And four three seven?
Four three seven. Twenty-five four three nine. And then twenty-five four four zero. And then twenty-five four five two. And that would be it, ma'am.
All right, I think I missed one. Councilwoman Williams. Said four five five, right?
Uh, yes, I did.
I don't see that on my, is it four four?
Oh, no, I didn't actually. I said, um, that would be four four oh, four four oh.
Okay. Yep, I got it. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, so we have twenty-five four twenty-four for Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
On the one for August the sixth at Thursday?
That was
Why are we doing it on the Thursday and not the Tuesday?
Because we ran into the conflict of National Night Out.
Okay, thank you.
So that should be amended. You guys got the amended copy? Cuz I don't have that moment.
Okay, thank you. I just, I forgot about that.
And, hold on, that was it? You have more on that one?
So I don't, I mean, and I don't know if we would have this like noted on here, but just a thought, we had spoken previously as a council about requiring the Board of Health to give us quarterly updates on what was going on. I don't know if that would necessarily be something that we would reflect on here. I know that they, we have the annual thing, but I like us, you know, as we move ahead to really think about solidifying something where, and I don't know, you know, if that could be left at the, at the leisure of, you know, the, the Council President to figure out that we would do it quarterly and then just have them come to certain, you know what I mean? To certain meetings to give presentations and stuff as well. And while we, we always set this meeting for June, I don't think we've ever had the, the actual meeting
On, in June?
In June. So that's why I'm saying maybe we kinda look at the quarterly thing. But to pick a date that we actually can commit, like if we're gonna do it, then to actually have it, you know, on that, on that day. So I guess the question I have is, is it required? Is it legally required for us to have it in June? The Board of Health meeting? Like is it the annual thing that has to happen in June every year statutorily?
I don't know that answer.
Mr. K, Ms. Dick, somebody?
Director Bridges, Dr. Bridges.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it. It's just that we've never been able to actually do it. Like we've, we've gotten around to it, but I just didn't know if, Council President, can I ask the BA if she knows, BA Richardson? With regard to the Board of Health annual meeting, is this something that is always required? Is it legally required that we had to do this in June? Cuz like we've never done it in June. Or was this just practice that it's always just been in June?
It was a practice. There is no legal issues with conducting it any other time that you would like.
Okay, so we don't even have to do an annual meeting. We could just have
You can do your quarterly meetings.
And presentations, I think so.
Okay, I just wanted to just clear that up. Thank you, BA Richardson. Thank you, Council President.
So do we want to take this June fourth date off?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, I just would like to suggest, cuz this usually comes up when we have this meeting, that it, the expanse of health and how big it is and all the different things they do, including animal shelter and et cetera and so forth. We usually go well over an hour for this. I think this should be split from a regular meeting no matter what. But I do like the idea of we're, as long as we're consistent, we hold ourselves to it of having a quarterly meeting or splitting it from the June fourth meeting and allotting roughly two hours for it. So we make sure that we cover all the, you know, material needed, the issues and concerns, because I know I've really enjoyed, as I've had members of the public mention, they're really glad that we asked so thorough questions of Health Department and making sure, you know, God forbid something happens, that we've covered all our bases.
Okay. So I, I would suggest maybe we add them into like maybe two or three of the meetings now? If you guys wanna do that? It's up to you. Or, or we could just do it as a presentation as the presidency's fit to bring them in. So let's take this, Mr. Garcia, can we have a motion to amend it just to remove that June fourth date? Or do we need an amendment for that?
So this is a motion to amend?
Just to remove June fourth date and then we'll leave it up to the leisure of the president at the time.
Okay. And that motion's made by?
Myself. I motioned to make an amendment.
Second. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
So wait. I'm sorry. Council President?
Yes.
Just, just to add, so legally we could do it as a presentation and it doesn't have to be slated as an annual meeting, like there's nothing by the Public Board of Health or anybody that says that we have to do this as a public meeting as opposed to a presentation or DEP. Like nobody says that we have to do this cuz we're the Board of Health. So does, is there anything that says, I just wanna be clear
Before we make that?
Yeah, before we, I mean, cuz we could still do the quarterly presentations, but if we still have to have the meeting, then to Councilwoman Williams' point, have it on a separate day from the regular meeting because it does take up so much time. Where we have questions, you know what I mean? And I even think before then, they should send us the presentation beforehand so they're not reading slide by slide to us, so that way we could digest it and then just be ready with questions that we have. I think that that takes up a lot of time too as we're trying to piece this thing together.
Madam President?
Council Vice President?
Just furthermore, I was just talking to Councilwoman Feliciano about it because we are the, we are a city council. We're the governing body of the city, but we're also the Board of Alcohol Beverage. That's separate from council. We have separate meetings. We're the Board of Health. So that should probably
Be a whole separate.
Meeting. We're in those meetings, we're not council members, we're board members.
Right.
Even though we still go by our titles respectfully, but we're board members. So should it not be a presentation and should it actually be a separate meeting?
A separate meeting. So let's, so again, then we'll leave it for the June fourth, or we could just add in two dates while we're here.
I would say.
I would say.
I like quarterly meetings.
Yeah, so let's say like a June, well, we can't do the sixth cuz that's the we can't, can we do the second? Why, we don't have a second. Add up, think about it. Is that because of the, impossible of elections or something? The June second?
The primary.
The June second. We don't have anything that day.
That would be a primary election.
It's because of the primaries. So we can't do that day. So let's shoot for June eighteenth?
Very well.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano. I'm thinking April, maybe April.
Well, what if, well, can we, we could just do the, well.
Let me look at my calendar, but I'm gonna pull the calendar up.
So on June twenty-third, we have our ABC board meeting.
Added to that?
Cuz they, they kinda tend to go pretty fast.
That makes sense.
Oh, June's our renewals. Okay.
Hold on, let me, I'm just gonna pull the calendar real quick.
So maybe we move it to May? No?
We could do May twenty-eighth, cuz May twenty-sixth is a right, which is a Tuesday. So we moved it to that Thursday in May, which would be May twenty-eighth.
Okay. Yeah, and then that way it could stand alone by itself. And then we could give it adequate time.
Memorial Day is the twenty-fifth. All right, so we want to amend it to just have May twenty-eighth and remove June fourth date?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Yeah. Well, I thought we wanted to do quarterly. So at least twice, even if we don't do quarterly, we should do at least twice a year. So I would say another date in maybe September and October? We got two in October. So, oh, yeah, you're right, okay. Maybe October twenty-ninth? I think that's good. You all okay with that? October twenty-ninth?
Council President?
Yes. Councilwoman Williams?
I'd just like to tip, maybe if we can move that up to maybe mid-October because that's a week before our municipal elections and I know there'll be a lot of busy folks.
That's true. You're right, you're right. Or we could just keep, cuz usually October ABC board meetings are kind of slow. Mr. Garcia, so if we could do it on that same day? October twenty-seventh?
If you'd like to do it on the same day as an ABC meeting, I think that's fine.
Council President?
No.
So I don't, I, I like the part about us just making the annual meeting on the twenty-eighth standalone. I think that's good, right? If we talk about doing, just having them present to us quarterly, then someone can just put them on the agenda and just say at these meetings per quarter, they're just giving us a presentation per they're just giving us a presentation per quarter, so it's not a set meeting date and time. So that way, we all know we're locked in here, May 28th. And then the, the leadership can set when the quarterly presentations will be made.
That's fine with me. I'm okay with that amendment. So let's amend it just to remove June 4th, include May 28th. Um, Mr. Garcia, and that would be it. Alright, cause that's a long story.
I'm sorry, Madam President. I apologize. So what is, um, we're, we're omitting, we're removing June 4th for May 28th and adding, what was the other date?
No other date.
No other date?
Yeah.
Okay. And that was motioned by yourself and second by?
Feliciano.
Thank you. And roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried for amendment. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to, oh well, excuse me. Um, would that be for consent or roll call?
Consent.
Thank you.
And the next one we have, um, which we have some people here to answer any questions. Um, we have Councilwoman Feliciano and Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's 4, 386.
So, I guess the, oh, I.
Let's see what the.
I'm fine with it, but I, I would like to, well, I guess we would have to approve it before we could see the final. I just wanted to see everything completed, um, in form. I don't have a question. I'm gonna be quiet.
No questions. So, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
That's it.
Thank you. Um, my, my concern with this is, is it, is it a 50-year pilot?
Thirty.
Thirty-year pilot?
Thirty.
Yeah, um. I, I, I think that, um, it, I think that a 30-year abatement, in my opinion, it, it kind of locks future administrations and residents into terms that ultimately can be, become unfair as, you know, tax-based needs change and, and housing markets change. Um, I think that sometimes shorter pilot terms, 15 to 25 years, or if it's gonna be a 30, maybe a gradual assessment, or, you know, five to 10 years. Let's, let's revisit it and see where we're at with the market. Um, I, I just, I, given, given this term of a pilot, you know, I'd like to see requirements such as, you know, requirement to local hiring targets, um, apprenticeships, uh, neighborhood improvement, you know, incentives and things of that nature. Um, and I appreciate you guys are here, so I kind of would like your feedback as to what this kind of looks like. So I'll let you.
So we have our, Ms. Huff, the Trent Housing Authority, Mr. Dean and Mr. Tibbs, President, to answer questions.
Yes. Good evening, Council President and Council. Uh, my name is Kristi Huff. I'm the Director of Redevelopment. I'm here with Richard Squireau Tibbs is our Director of Finance, and Dean Oliver from PRC, our development partner. Um, yes, we're very excited to get this first phase of the project started. Um, we've been working on this project since 2019. We're residents and community in the city of Trenton as our co-applicant of this project. Um, but yes, the pilot is important for financing. I'll let Dean go more into detail as far as, um, the financing, um, advantages. Um, but we do use local hiring on all of our projects. We have been very successful. We have a, a community empowerment plan in place that we use and implement with all of our developments. We like to have opportunity to come back in the new year to do a formal presentation and to explain where we are with all of our phases. This is a five-phase project. Um, we are excited to reduce the blight in the North Trenton neighborhood and to partner with the Trenton Public School Systems on this Junior Run Project as well. Um, but I'll let Dean talk more about the pilot, but this is just very pivotal moment for us to actually get, break ground and get in, get started with this project and get started with this neighborhood project, because it's been long overdue and we've been working on it for a very long time. Dean, you could comment on the pilot.
Good evening, council members. Appreciate the time. Uh, Dean Oliver from, uh, People Restoring Communities, the THA's Development Partner. Um, the importance of this particular pilot is that we really catalyze the development throughout North Trenton. Um, this is the standard, our ask is for the standard HMFA 6.28% rate uh, for the 30 years. That would be typical for any other HMFA project where they are providing the first mortgage. Uh, so we're hoping that that is, you know, that this is just sort of a pro forma request for the council. Um, and as I mentioned, I think the, the importance here is that, um, the operating expenses for the proposed building be maintained at a fairly low and affordable rate throughout the duration of that mortgage, so that we can maintain the debt payments on that mortgage. Um, this is the first of five phases, as Kristi mentioned. Uh, the first two of those phases, um, are gonna be 100% affordable, uh, backed by project-based vouchers provided by DCA. Um, so these are low-income, 100% low-income, um, residents that will be living in these buildings. And the future phases, three through five, will have more of a mixture of middle and market-rate, um, income units. Um, where, you know, the income coming in for those buildings at whether the HMFA rate or other, um, will be able to generate more income for the city. Um, and then the only other thing I would say is that this overall choice plan helps to really catalyze uh, development throughout the entire North Trenton area. Um, the importance of this project is that we're really looking to create a marketplace for other, um, interested developers and partners to come into the city and be able to also be doing the types of things that we're looking to do here. Um, it's really important that this be the first one, that we kind of set it in stone and really allow for future development to, uh, to mobilize.
Thank you. And really quick, and you, uh, I haven't been in the market of renting in 15 plus years. Um, you say, you say affordable. Um, I see studio one-bedroom, 1644. We're talking 2028, when we think this is gonna be up and running. Um, two-bedroom, 2107, three-bedroom, 3422. What, um, levels of assistance, um, is gonna be available to residents, you know, to counter, um, some of these rent fees, rental fees?
Uh, yeah, sure. So, so this first phase is going to be 108 units. Um, 107 of them will be for the seniors that are directly coming from the Donnelly Homes development site. Um, all those units will be one-bedroom apartments that are set at a blended rent, um, that are determined by really HUD's, um, fair market rent, which is, uh, the blended rent is roughly $1,600 for the one-bedroom, 1620-something for the one-bedroom. Um, those, all those apartments are being supported by project-based vouchers provided by DCA. So the, the resident is only paying 30% of their adjusted gross income. The balance of that rent payment is being covered by the voucher.
It's the standard.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And just, I just want to say, you know, as I know Councilwoman Williams and myself and a couple of other, uh, council members have been in some of the meetings, and I will say that they have had, had had very intense community meetings with, um, a lot of community input on the projects that are going on around North Trenton with the Community, uh, Choice Neighborhood Program. So, um, kudos to you all for all the work that you're doing.
Council President?
Uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So I just want to.
I'm sorry, you had questions. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to say, I mean, it's no secret, I've been a great supporter and a cheerleader, uh, for this project, as I know, uh, many others in the council have done also. And, um, particularly given that we were able to win the $15 million for Choice Neighborhood, I'm really encouraged that we're able to have this happen, that a lot of seniors will benefit from it particularly, and that, uh, so many units will be able to build, be able to be built one time. Just unfortunate, you know, we lost Junior One, uh, in the fire. So I am, uh, very supportive of the pilot. Uh, when it comes to private entities, um, that's where I more so have my questions about whether we should do something like that or not over time. But I do understand my colleagues' concerns, um, particularly, you know, Trent Housing Authority has really put so much into this, um, that, you know, we need to make sure that this project comes to fruition, that it's successful, and then if, uh, also, I don't know if Ms. Huff could speak about it particularly, uh, but my understanding is, once we break ground on this and progress is made, we can also eventually reapply for additional monies from the federal government. Now granted, they may not be available, admittedly, sadly, uh, but we are able to, um, reapply to Choice Neighborhood again. Is that correct, ma'am?
Uh, yes. So we had originally applied for $15 million and received $19 million. So we still have a gap for the rest of the phases. Um, with the $15 million, well, the $19 million, we expect to do two and a half phases. So the first two phases, once we break ground, preferably around March of 2026, six months later, we hope to break ground in the neighborhood infill. So we'll have two phases of the development going on simultaneously. Um, so we're, you know, very hopeful. We've already been advocating to HUD. It's just that if the money comes available, we have to apply again for supplemental funding.
Okay. And then, um, as far as the financial, just I know there may be some members of the public who might ask, um, the success of the project and the financing and so forth, uh, it is contingent on receiving the pilot?
Yes, yes. Cause we would have a larger gap if we weren't able to, um, have the pilot in place. And if HMFA looks for us to have a pilot when we apply.
Alright. Well, thank you very much, and I look forward to hopefully seeing everyone, uh, at the ribbon cutting. Groundbreaking, rather.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued collaboration with the Trent Housing Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent? Everybody's go with that. Alright, then we have 425. Um, I did ask Admin to come up before us to explain further, uh, but I know Councilwoman Feliciano and Councilwoman Williams have questions. Oh, okay. So, uh, Mr. Chair, you want to explain further on this one, and maybe that'll answer some of their questions?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, this resolution is pretty, uh, normal course of business resolution. This council has approved similar ones, um, in the past, and we do this from time to time. Uh, these are two capital accounts for the Trenton Water Works that were dedicated for specific projects. Those projects have been completed now, and they came in under the total that we had originally dedicated. In part because typically we dedicate sort of round numbers, um, and these came in under budget. So that money essentially exists on the books until such time as council takes an action to, um, cancel those allocations. Then those numbers come off of the debt service for the utility, not the, the city, but for the utility. And then, um, we can move forward, and it of course reduces their total carried debt. Um, and we won't specifically reprogram this exact money, but it provides us with some, uh, buffer, so that when we need to bond for the next set of money, we don't have this also dragging down the utilities' books. Hopefully that answers, uh, some of those questions.
Answers, okay. What, uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, ma'am. That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consent?
Yes, please.
Alright, next I have, I think I really missed one from Councilwoman Williams, but, uh, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, 25, 431.
Yes. Oh, very simple question, I think. Um, I just, unless I'm missing something, I was just looking for, um, a, a property address for this?
Um, the tax collector did not want to include the property address. It is stated in the letter, in the memo that she sent, because she didn't want to expose, um, the resident who was actually under foreclosure and bankruptcy.
Thank you. Sure. Consent?
Yes.
Madam President?
Oh, CVP?
Um, thank you. I, I had a question about this, um, and I know I asked it in a document review, but I have since sent some, I sent an email to our council attorney to ask more information about this process and whether there is a standard operating procedure that handles these types of situations, and what does that process look like? And if that's something that council needs to intercede on legislatively. Um, we are aware that, you know, when a person falls behind on taxes, then there's a tax sale certificate that's going to happen. If there is a bankruptcy, or if the person dies and it goes to probate court, those are processes that will halt that process from their taxes being sold on a tax lien sale. But this property somehow missed that. So with this property in particular, the bankruptcy was filed in April of 2022, but for some reason it still ended up on a tax sale certificate approved by the previous council on December 22nd of 2022, um, months after the bankruptcy was filed. And it, and it says here, that says, uh, I'm just gonna read it to the public, cause they don't have this in their hands. Whereas on December 22nd of 2022, a tax sale certificate was sold against a property known as this block and lot number. The owner of said property filed an action in bankruptcy court in April of 2022, but failed to notice the city of Trenton in his finding, his filings. And then it goes on to say, even without notification, while covered by bankruptcy stay, an enforcement action such as a tax sale is not permitted. And as a result, and having just learned of this situation, the lien holder has requested a refund of their investment. The person that bought the lien wants their money back. And now council is being asked to cancel this invalid tax sale certificate due to this bankruptcy thing. So my question was about the standard operating procedure. Whether or not the property owner notifies the municipality, is it not a part of the process for the tax office to look up or do some type of title search on whether there is a bankruptcy or, or a death, or something that it ended up in an estate in probate court that would halt this?
The standard procedure does not include looking into if there is a bankruptcy. Um, the person filing the bankruptcy has the burden of communicating their creditors, um, that there is a, uh, that they are filing for bankruptcy. And, uh, I think that the city attorney would be better equipped than me to explain, um, what is the process for that.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Business Administrator Richardson. Um, the standard operating procedure statutory, um, when you are preparing for foreclosure, you're gonna do a title search. You're gonna get a title on the property, uh, uh, bankruptcy, excuse me. Um, no, I'm, I'm talking with respect to the tax of sale and foreclosure. Before you're doing a foreclosure, you're gonna run a title search. You're gonna see every person that has a lien interest claim against that property. You're going to put all of those entities individual and notice that you are intending to file bankruptcy. After notice and, uh, uh, the creditors make themselves known and, and attend a creditors committee meeting where they fill out what's called a notice of claim, and you are getting ready to finalize the, um, foreclosure action, you run another title search to make sure that there are no additional new claims on that property. Once you have fulfilled that obligation, you submit all of those documents to the court, and the court will ultimately award a foreclosure. And then we've discussed the process with how those tax, um, certificates are then, um, sold, including the, uh, period within which the homeowner can reclaim that property if they so choose. Parallel to that, or not parallel, but separate from that is the bankruptcy proceeding. If someone's filing for bankruptcy, they go into federal bankruptcy court and file for Chapter 11, uh, bankruptcy in, in, in this case, or Chapter 9, depending on what they're trying to do. In that proceeding, they will notify the court of all of their creditors, and they will say, all these people have claims against my income, my property, my business, what, what, what have you. Similar to foreclosure, but this is in bankruptcy. That same process will follow in, in bankruptcy, where the court will get the assets called the estate, and the bankruptcy court will distribute the state assets on a prorata amount to cover the creditors' claims. If the person or entity filing bankruptcy does not notify the court, If the person or entity filing bankruptcy does not notify the court and/or the city that they file for bankruptcy, even though some time has passed, there's nothing that we can do as part of the foreclosure process to capture that. The reason why the stay is important is because if you violate the state, there are very heightened penalties that we will get assessed against us for any type of collection efforts whatsoever. And there's also a lookback period with respect to that. I'm not a bankruptcy attorney, but I believe it's a seven-year lookback period. So this is just unfortunately a situation where the creditor did not notify the bankruptcy court, the creditor did not notify the city. There are certain consequences with respect to that that will take place in the bankruptcy court, but in terms of the foreclosure process, that's just a separate process unto itself.
Thank you, Director, for your thorough explanation of what happens once the tax lien is sold to the person and they begin the foreclosure process. But I want to know about the process with the administration internally prior to it being sold to anyone. What is that standard operating procedure? Do you guys not have your own internal title search process where you look up whether these properties, before you throw it on the list for council to approve it for this sale? Is there a title search that would look into bankruptcy court or probate court to see whether or not this property qualifies to get on that list in the first place before it's sold?
No, the process is to pull the title search at the beginning of the foreclosure process, and then before you go for a final foreclosure, to pull title again on that property. There's no way to identify unless there's been a judgment as a result of a bankruptcy proceeding or civil action that that title search will capture that bankruptcy that someone has filed whenever they've decided to file it.
Okay, so is there?
May I add something? This is not necessarily going into a foreclosure procedure. We are talking about a tax certificate sale. We still may have two additional years before that property is foreclosed on. So this was not necessarily a foreclosure. This was us selling a tax certificate, not necessarily selling the property, disposing the property in foreclosure.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that, that was definitely clear. I'm just curious as to how come the city's not making sure that this property isn't in bankruptcy court before putting it on a tax sale certificate list?
The property itself wouldn't be in bankruptcy, it would be the owner of the property. So it's not like, it's not as though the property claimed bankruptcy. The individual will claim bankruptcy, enlist their creditors, and at the creditors committee, they will go over all of that individual's assets. So the property did not file bankruptcy, the owner of the property filed for bankruptcy.
But this property was in that bankruptcy. It was included in that bankruptcy, that's what it's telling us here. But they didn't notify the city. And then it says, even without notification, while covered by bankruptcy, stay in the enforcement such as a tax sale is not permitted. So it comes down to them not notifying the city, so the city didn't know that the property was involved in the bankruptcy, so they sold it on a tax sale. So I'm saying, can this be prevented so that three years later, we're not having to cancel this?
No. And again, the property was not in the bankruptcy, the individual was. So it's not as though this person said, I'm putting my property into bankruptcy. The person put themselves into bankruptcy, and then took into consideration all of the person's assets, their income, their savings, all of those things. There's a very technical provision, a bankruptcy provision in the bankruptcy code to exclude primary residents. So it's a very technical process in bankruptcy, to the point where we have bankruptcy attorneys who specialize in that, that handle those matters. We do not handle those matters internally. So there was just short of us getting notice of that bankruptcy, either from the court or from the creditor. There's no standard operating procedure for us to identify every single property tax lien that we're looking to do, whether or not that person or that entity has filed for bankruptcy. That's their obligation.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Counselwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. Just real quick, how much is the refund?
It's a good question. That is the $20,000 question.
Right.
It is not.
So we can't approve something we don't have an amount for because we don't know what the amount is?
We will have an amount in five minutes if you allow me to.
Council President? All right, so we can skip past this one for right now. So, Mr. Garcia?
Well, that, so considering that, I believe the next resolution you have is 437?
437, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize, I did have a question about 25455. Do you want me to go that way first? Because that was previous?
455?
That is on the previous page.
Oh, I thought you said 25.
Yeah, I said both of them, but when you asked me earlier if it was 455, and I apologize, I said that I didn't, but I actually did.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
I don't see a 455 on my paper.
Oh, it's 25455, just before Department of Police on page four.
So for Resolution 455?
Yeah, regarding supporting the application of 221 East Town over LLC? For Aspire Funding?
I'm sorry, which one is the resolution number?
425.
25455.
Yes, basically this resolution is seeking to provide support to this company so that they can look for aspire funding, which is basically a gap funding. They just need additional monies. They have already secured their finances, but need additional money from EDA. So it's a requirement from EDA that the municipality would support their ask through a resolution. They are, I think, planning to build 23 units there.
Okay, well, thank you, ma'am.
But it shows no commitment from us, except that we are supporting the project.
Okay. So my question, and I realize you may not know this because it's slightly in the weeds potentially, but the property that they are going to be doing this development at was previous, the Nevius Arms Rooming House, which I actually visited a few times previously. So the work constituents living there, certainly in a temporary, you know, long-term temporary situation with the rooming house. I don't know that there are any residents still there because I haven't seen the building in a little bit of time. But do you happen to know if it's still presently operating as a rooming house or if it's been shut down where those residents maybe were moved on to?
I am not sure about that.
Okay.
I will not be able to provide information.
I understand. And then next door was the previously closed down, the Law Building. So is this project strictly going to be for, and they're both attached, the Nevius Arms Rooming House and then the Law Building. So is it intended that 221 will be torn down, but 219, the Law Building, will still be standing? Or do you happen to know that East Town Over LLC, did they acquire both buildings and will be tearing both of them down?
I am not, I don't have that information, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right, thank you very much, Consent Agenda, ma'am.
Thank you. Now moving on to?
I'm sorry, Council President?
You got the agenda?
Actually, I don't. The tax collector is telling me that attached to this resolution, this resolution that we are discussing is to cancel the tax sale certificate, but it should be paired by a resolution with the refund. I don't have the resolution with the refund in the docket, so at this time, I would like to pull this resolution until we actually go to the clerk in my office to see what is the pairing resolution with the refund.
We're pulling 431. Yes, okay.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
25437 is Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, ma'am. Director Vasquez, I could ask her a question?
437.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So I'm very, I'm definitely supportive of this resolution, but I was looking to see if you could provide any more information on the tours, as far as any type of timeline if the application is approved by UEZ? And, you know, what the, as far as a, you know, plan for, would we be hiring locals to conduct the tours? Or, you know, can you kind of give a little vision to what this might be created? And hopefully, we will be able to utilize it next year during the 250th birthday.
Council President, may I take the question?
Sure.
Yes, we actually just, in the process of applying to UEZ for that money, and yes, the money is intended, the funding is intended to underwrite some of the activities that we are planning for the 250 anniversary. Don't ask me to say the same words, that I never can say it right. So it's basically for historic tours and our African-American trail tours that we have been talking for a while. So it is intended to fund some of those activities. And we are hoping that we get that presented in the next meeting of UEZ and that they will have a positive opinion of our proposal. But that's basically what we are trying to do right now, is apply for the funding.
All right, thank you. Would it be a reasonable expectation that if they do go for it, that you might be able to receive the monies in the first or second quarter of 2026?
Yes, usually they see the funding applications every other month, so we just need the council authorization to apply. And we are really optimistic that we will get it, so the resolution is to apply and accept.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much, and good luck to you and all of us with this. Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Consent Agenda, please.
Thank you. Next one is 439, Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, thank you. So I know this is something that's come up from time to time, and we've all asked about improving the grounds of City Hall and the plaza, et cetera. So in seeing that we were going to be rejecting bids, do we have any update on sending out to obtain new bids, hopefully? And can you explain just a little bit for public consumption why the bids were rejected, sir?
The bids came in, they were too high. We have a grant for trees, and what we're looking to do is, there used to be trees back there way back when. And of course, we put too much salt down and it kills the trees. So this is going to replace that whole patio back there and then have a raised tree bed. That was the plan. But the bid came back at 1.6 and upwards to $4 million, we're not doing it.
Okay.
So we will have to revisit, once we have a conversation about our capital budget.
Understood, so you might expect a redesign and what the original vision might be also?
No, no redesign, because the job, the concrete needs to be done. The trees need to be planted. Just hopefully casting a wider net for more potential vendors.
Okay, well, thank you for sticking with it, it's much appreciated. Thank you. Consent Agenda, please?
And then you have one for 440 also?
Yes. Yeah, same thing, if you just can explain the rejecting of the bids.
So, yeah, I think this, we got a little public attention about this one. So it's not what you think. When we talk about promotional items, I'm talking about uniforms for my staff. I'm talking about uniforms for the young kids who work for Take It To The Streets, a recreation staff, because it says City of Trenton, it says the name of the event on the back. We're also talking about promotional items that are also included in that bid that go out to the public. So when we purchase things, when we have our events, it could be neighborhood block parties, it could be National Night Out, it could be a Halloween event, it could be a turkey giveaway, a Christmas event. Those are events for the public where we tend to have giveaways. But the vast majority of this item is for basically what amounts to uniforms. Even our basketball leagues, the jerseys and the shorts are included in this. So what you will, just to be clear, what we're going to do is, I'm going to remove what are strictly promotional items from this bid, because DCA has some issue with that, and I'm going to put together a new bid that is just for uniforms, just strictly uniforms. We're going to probably bypass purchasing shirts for events to give away randomly, and it'd just be my staff shirts. It'd be, I know, I know it's not, nobody wants to hear that, everybody wants a shirt. But yeah, you know, times are hard. So that's what we're going to do, we'll focus on?
Got to cut there.
Exactly. We're going to focus on the athletic leagues, we're going to focus on recreation staff, and our permanent staff and uniforms for that, voting our events that way.
All right, thank you. And it sounds like you wouldn't expect this to impact any of your operations or presentations to the public that they've been used to in the past, as far as actual events?
I didn't, I didn't, can you repeat that, Councilwoman Williams?
No, no problem. So that, it sounds to me that there will be no changes to your actual operations about like having leagues or any events, just we may not have free t-shirts for spectators and stuff like that?
Yes, well, yes, there'll be some conversations, because we do, for example, Kobe Day in the park. It's a big successful event, and we do our basketball at Catwater Park. We're going to wish to have items for those events, but it will not be widespread t-shirts for everybody. What we're doing is looking, and we're saying, listen, we're redirecting resources to where we need them most, that's all we're doing. And the leagues are most important because that's where we get the most young people. Catwater Park was packed this summer with people, and we want to continue that. So we're just moving the resources there.
All right, thank you very much, I'm glad to hear that. Consent Agenda, please?
Thank you. The next one, 452, Councilwoman Feliciano and Councilwoman Williams.
Hello, Director.
Hello, hello, Council.
Just curious, what does the supplemental amount cover?
So we, part of the original scope, we requested a supplemental bid to cover unforeseen circumstances throughout this project. This is a federal project, and it's part of the scope of services that we had to include.
So what was the unforeseen circumstances that cost $185,616?
We don't know yet, but once the construction starts, instead of coming back for a change order, it will cover all of these things.
So we're just putting this in anticipation of something?
Yes.
Going wrong? Has something gone wrong before that made us do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Every, any construction project, you could have unforeseen circumstances.
Right.
And this is a federal grant, so you have to be careful how we handle this one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
I'm good, Councilwoman Feliciano wisely asked the same question, thank you, ma'am.
Consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it for our resolutions, Mr. Garcia?
All right, Madam President, with that in mind, then, if you'd like to ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of, and I don't believe we have any?
One pulled.
We have one pulled, correct?
Yes, two.
I'll go ahead, threw them then, I'm sorry?
It was two pulls, sorry.
Okay, if you want to ask for, excuse me, I apologize. If you want to ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of all the resolutions, with the exception of the pulled resolutions, and those pulled resolutions were for?
31. Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, and what was the other?
It was actually four thirty-one, I was looking at the ordinance.
Okay. So then if you want to ask for a motion to approve a consensus, consent agenda consisting of all the resolutions this evening, with the exception of four thirty-one.
May we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Who was the, who was moved by, I'm sorry?
Edwards.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving to ordinances for first reading and introduction.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-eight, an ordinance creating position of economic development, representative for, for the Department of Housing and Economic Development, Division of Economic Development. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
If you have a motion to approve twenty-five, one forty-eight, so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? I was waiting.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, ordinance twenty-five dash one forty-nine has been pulled. A move to ordinance twenty-five dash one fifty, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as Seventeen Summer Street, identified on the city tax map as Block four thousand four, Lot fifty, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve thirteen C, to Jean Laverin for the sale price of ten thousand dollars.
May we have a motion to approve one, twenty-five, one fifty?
Madam President?
Do you want to have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, but I have a question too.
Okay, so second, Feliciano, right, now we can discuss it, CBP.
Thank you. With respect to previous conversations that we have had between us, we have asked for property sales to go before the HED ad hoc committee. And I know there were some scheduling conflicts, so that never happened. And there were some miscommunications as well, so it just never happened. But we were hoping to try to get a meeting before tonight so that we can go over all of the properties that are on this list before we vote on them, because there's still some outstanding questions and concerns. So I am, before I motion to pull any of these, or table them rather, to the next meeting, I know BA Richardson is at the podium right now, she may have something to say.
Oh, no, 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 just anticipating your questions, so that.
I thought you guys were scheduling a meeting before we, so it never happened.
It wasn't able to happen, the holidays got in the way. And Chief of Staff Beach is sick, so he's not in this week or in the past couple of days. So we, we need to schedule a meeting.
Okay, I'm okay with tableing until the next meeting. You agree with that? You guys agree? So can I have a motion to table twenty-five, one fifty, one fifty-one, one fifty-two, one fifty-three, one fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight until December sixteenth?
So moved.
Second. Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say also, just for the record, we, we've been asking for different documents to accompany these ordinances when they come forward, right? And while the printout of the assessment has been provided, the tax lien search part of it has not been, right? Because we were asking about the LLCs, about everybody, right? But in particular, the LLCs, we wanted to see the formation paperwork. Some of that's not been provided, we've not seen the tax lien search paperwork on it. Just to give us some clarity about what is going on. And then in some cases, you know, it, it's a little, a little confusing when you have on one line the LLC name, but then the application has somebody else's name, and then the application wasn't signed by people. I just feel like there's not a thorough enough job. Like, we're looking to move the properties, but there has to be a complete concise system in order for us to be able to do this. And again, no way am I against moving the properties or allowing the people to purchase them. I am all for it. But as we've said from like the very beginning, there has to be some form of uniformity and it has to be consistency in order for us to be able to stand on it and comfortably say yes to the property movement. And the fact that we weren't able to have a meeting by no fault of council, it's just, if that was what the agreement was for us to meet with the HED before docket review or whatever, I forget what it was. But if, if that was supposed to happen to kind of help us to be able to weed through this, then we need to be able to have that time to weed through it, to get it right. Thank you.
Noted, I will make sure to schedule the meeting with the Chief of Staff. And I will also, now that we have a calendar of meetings for next year, so that we also prepare a calendar of meetings prior to council meeting, not, not prior to council meeting, but prior to the docket going out, so that we can have the, the necessary discussions, I agree. So noted, and I will make sure to correct it. And I take responsibility for not getting back to the council vice president with the meeting. We have conflicts, but I neglected to call her back to inform her, so my apologies, please.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Garcia?
To the roll call?
Oh, to the roll call, sorry, yes.
Certainly. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
And this is the table. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Items are tabled until?
Till we meet.
December sixteenth.
Till we meet.
Next meeting.
The next public meeting?
Yes, it's, it's tabled since twelve sixteen.
Thank you. And Madam President, with that in mind, we can move to public comment. To the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. You may address any item that you wish at this time. The council is not obligated to respond, please state your name and address for the record. First individual listed for public comment is Robin S. Washington.
Good evening, Ms. Washington.
Good evening, Robin Washington, four four seven, West Sanover Street. I came here in anticipation of item number twenty-five dash one five six, the property that I've been trying to purchase for the last six years, directly across the street from my home, since it finally got to council, getting council approval, so I can move forward. So I will be at the next meeting to see where we are with that at that time. Because this is not the time or the place to even elaborate on that. But my concern about a property that I own right next door to me, that this lead abatement program that the city has for lead inspection, or lead inspections, that it has taken four times and almost fourteen hundred dollars in inspection fees to get this property to pass. You know, I get it the first time, okay. The second time, eh, the third time, okay, what's going on? Because initially, it's four hundred and fifty dollars for the first inspection, three hundred dollars for each additional inspection. And each time I've come to City Hall, I've immediately gone to the bank, gotten a money order, brought it back, right back. But the process that it takes in order to get these test samples evaluated is, at this point right now, has, is causing me financial hardship. Because this process started in July. The property just passed in the beginning of November. It's a four-bedroom house, hardwood floors, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, two full bathrooms. It is a property that if I needed somewhere to live, that I could go there and live and be comfortable. I am not a slumlord. This lead process, the, the lead levels that are testing high, I've known everybody that has lived in that house since my parents bought the house I lived in, I live in since nineteen sixty-four. No one has ever had an issue with lead poisoning, lead reaction, whatever, no one. And when I ask here on the second floor, well, what is it testing high for? If it's not lead, what is this high number? But nobody can explain to me what this high number is. But yet, I'm paying this fee multiple times to get re-inspected. I came down yesterday to ask, okay, so what is it, what was it testing high for? If it's not lead? Because if it was a lead readout, then it would say, okay, you have high levels of lead. And this is something that needs to be addressed. But multiple families have lived in that house that, you know, I've been able to reach out to, and nobody, adult, or their children, or, or their now adult children, has tested positive for lead. So I don't know. I know that the city has contracted with this company to provide these services. At this point, I'm questioning the credibility of that company. I'm test, I'm, 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 I'm not comfortable with the results, because the house is clean from top to bottom, move-in ready. And I had a tenant ready to move in on September first, which may have lost their rental assistance, because I'm just now, two weeks ago, getting the certificate of occupancy and the lead certification. Because if this is the process that I have to go through, I'm trying to buy the property right across the street from me, and this is going to be all new build. So I'm hoping like, you know, it doesn't come up with this mysterious lead high reading that nobody can tell me what it is, but yet it's not lead. Because I really don't understand it. So if somebody could please help me to understand why there needs to be multiple inspections, and it's not a fast turnaround, even if you're being re-inspected, for, you know, for the homeowner or, or the landlord, it's not a, it's not a fast process. I started this in July. November, I'm, I'm finally getting a clearance. It goes from twelve items, to two items, to one item, and then now it's clear. And like I said, almost fourteen hundred dollars later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Victory Rosari?
Victory Rosari, nineteen Moreland Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. It's an honor again to be in front of you. My issue is what was hap, what's happened recently with Venezuela. The President Venezuela, he's classified as a terrorist and he's done his dirt so far, he didn't want to, you know, get out of office. He maintained, he stayed there, and we have another person supposed to be the actual true president. That leads me to this city, so-called classified sanctuary city. And it's on FBI's list for looking for immigrant, immigrants to deport, according to the executive order fourteen two eighty-seven. Protection, the protection, protecting American communities from criminal aliens requires the republic, the publication of a list of state and local jurisdictions that Trenton is on it. My issue is with this, that this problem occurred again with executive order one seventeen twenty-seven of nineteen fifty, nineteen, nineteen seventy-three, started with a pilot program, seventy-one, and from a, a, a master program called, called Quotient Pro with Edgar Hoover destroying the black community again in search of black, I mean, the black Messiah. Supposed to raise up and help everybody and save the world. All right, that spilled over, and I was studying Philip, Philip, Philip Luciano from New York City, and he's a spin, he was the president of, on the chapter of the Young Lords back in the sixties, and spun off of the Black Panthers. And he got his from, I believe, his chair from Chicago, started the Black Lords there. So again, we're going back to a community where it's black, black, black and brown, which is, I call it black, what you call it, um, black and beige, beige, because so many mix, a mixture of Hispanics or Latinos. My issue is that this, this, there's a problem with the, the nation of Venezuela, I'm introduced to the term black, or being black, black and proud, and so forth, James Brown got, you know, praise for it, as bringing up the so-called American Negro up to the level of humanity, and that's being a black person that they should be proud of. But not worship, again, not worship, his purpose was to bring the black community, African-American community of fifteen fifty-five, sixteen nineteen, up into the level of humanity. And to be black is to be universal, the base of humanity, according to the honorable Elijah Muhammad, and not something to be praised, or praised and be isolated from the rest of society and expect entitlements that we, the Latinos, I said the Puerto Ricans, according to Philip Luciano, he's still, I believe he's still alive, and the help we put in helping the African-Americans, then taken over by the black man so-called, they consider himself to be a supreme god over all the gods, when Jesus said, oh, two thousand years ago, speaking to the fabrications of his time, doesn't the sounds to another two thousand years before him, aren't we considered gods and to be, and to die as men? My issue is that Hispanics are, are being exploited as helping the black community and then kicked to the curb, and then the, the product that we, that comes not from my land, but for those who produce those lands are being taken, made, making black gangsters or black underground, whatever say, bisexual individual, paying gangsters, making them wealthy, and then when we need to help go political and change the drug laws, they refuse, because they told me, or I was told once, at least once, but more than once, that it, to do that is to bring the drugs into our communities, which they are already here, brought here by Edgar Hoover, the mafia, and the Arabs, and whoever else, to destroy the black community. So we, 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 we're going, we're not going nowhere, but yet, again, you want to be isolated, you're going into this black extremism, the strict extremism and isolationism that you want yourself, you want to put yourself out of the Democratic, Democratic Party, and then those Republicans, you don't know you want to be a Republican, American, or black and isolated. And I think that's an insult to me. And interracial marriages, and interracial marriages, biracial couples and children are what glues together, or knit together, human race as one race. Other than that, isolation is not American. All right, extremism, any kind of race, particularly black extremism, is not American.
Sir, that is your time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Asalamu alaikum.
Uh, let's see here, F and, F and D Luxury Homes? Moving on to Julia Pete Carrado Tyson. Wayne Samuels. Madam President, those are all the individuals that I have listed for public comment at this time. If you wish, you can move on to civic comment.
We are more than welcome, Miss, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, Council President, I appreciate it. So I just stick to some announcements tonight. First one will be that on Wednesday, December seventeenth, we'll be having a North Ward Assistant Police Advisory Council meeting at Galley Baptist Church from five thirty to seven P.M. Our special guest will be Trenton City Clerk Brandon Garcia, who will be speaking about the operations of the city clerk's office and also how their office interfaces with law enforcement, with the Trenton Police Department and emergency services. So please attend, the meetings are very good communication ties between the citizens and our police department, particularly on issues in the North Ward. Additionally, they'll be having the Heroes Holiday Giving Dinner. Additionally, they'll be having the Heroes Holiday Giving Dinner this coming Saturday, December 6th, at the Trenton Fire Department from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If you want to volunteer or donate, please contact Captain Tori Sykes at 609-696-3950. We'll also be having on Monday, December 15th, our annual Hanukkah celebration in front of City Hall at 4:30 PM. Please come and attend it. That is one of your holiday events, along with Christmas and Kwanzaa. It's a really nice event. I've been there in the past myself. And of course, this coming Friday night is our Christmas tree lighting and parade through downtown Trenton and to City Hall. It'll start from City Hall at 3:00 PM with a ceremony of performance beginning at 5:00 PM. And there'll be free gifts, music and entertainment. And you will most definitely see the best looking Christmas tree in all of Mercer County in front of City Hall. So please come and join us. It's a great time. That's about it. I wish everybody well. Thank you for attending or watching our meeting tonight. And hopefully we'll see you at the next one. God bless.
Thank you. Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg?
Thank you. I just have two quick things. First of all, I want to give a shout out to Director Paul Harris, City of Trenton Mayor, for coming up with 140 turkeys for me to give to South Village residents. I called them up on a Friday and Monday, we had the delivery and we were able to give them out. So thank you so much. It was so much appreciated. We organized it very, very quickly. And I also want to shout out the Public Works Sanitation Department. You know, a lot of the holidays do fall on days that are trash pickup days for the South Ward. It is a headache. People don't listen. They put out their trash when they're not supposed to. The trash piles up and gets ripped up. And then the next day that trash can get picked up, it's just a nightmare. But again, they were out there still. I was getting text messages as late as almost seven o'clock tonight that they were still picking up trash. And I do understand that tickets are going out for people who are putting out their trash improperly, putting them out on holidays, days that are not sanitation. And I am telling you all, in the South Ward specifically, I am an advocate for it. You know, we need to start following ordinances in the city. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for hanging in there with us as we move through. Thank you to my council colleagues for having a very productive meeting tonight and us working through the difficult challenges, right? And trying to get some clarity on some things. So first, I just want to thank all the different organizations that did turkey giveaways, Thanksgiving giveaways. They really stepped up and stepped in the gap to help during the Thanksgiving season. I'm not going to name anyone because I don't want to omit anyone. But I want to thank everyone that stepped up and did something to help somebody else. Your efforts have been amazing and they have not gone unnoticed. So thank you, thank you, thank you for the community for stepping up. On December the 15th, here in City Council Chambers from 5:30 to 7:00. If you need help applying for energy efficiency programs, I have Janaba Figueroa coming in from CMC Energy. They'll be on site to be able to help which PSEG program is right for you. So it's free. It's here. It's from 5:30 to 7:00 on December the 15th. So I encourage people to come to Council Chambers to take part in that. We've been advertising for that. The senior gala was last night. The mayor and Health and Human Services Director Diego Minicappelli did a great job celebrating the seniors. I will be glad when the senior advisory board finally gets underway. We've still been waiting on that and waiting on that. But I'm hearing that they're moving forward with that or trying to. Again, it's not about any additional monies needing to be spent by the administration or the city. It's about giving the people access, right? To have them be able to voice their opinions and be able to say something from their perspective. If we're lucky enough or blessed enough, many of us will live to be senior citizens. And I certainly would like to know that people have an ear to hear what it is that we would have to say to help better our situation. Congratulations to Dress for Success. I am a board member with Dress for Success, a wonderful organization. They had graduates recently, well, last night, that finished a successful business startup program. And it was great to see the young women that graduated the program. It's an entrepreneurial program where they had to put forth a business plan and all of that kind of stuff. They went through trainings and everything and they went through the program. And they graduated last night. The event was held at the Lobby Club, so that was very nice to see. I'd also like to address the issue of the tax sale that's currently taking place here in the city. So we have the tax sale that's happening. They have people here from Trenton Water Works that have been stationed here that will be here through the time of the sale to answer questions because there's issues or liens with the water and with the taxes. My concern is, is that the day before Thanksgiving, the city dismissed early, but did not give proper notification to the public that this was taking place. I am not against the city letting out early before a major holiday. I mean, that is the city's prerogative to do that. But what I do have a problem with is not finding out until like 1:15 in the afternoon that the city was closing at 2:00. You have people that would leave from work to try to come here to pay their bills. And there was no public notification. And then those of us that are council members were told, you got to come get your docket. And then if you don't have your docket, it's going to be left at the security desk. But then we found out their security doesn't stay beyond the building closing time because of overtime. So now we're all over the place and people are scrambling, trying to get a hold of things. That should never be the case. We have to do better with alerting people as to what's going on. I know that previously I had asked the administration if they just pick your days that you're going to dismiss early and just let everybody know that this is the day, this is when we're getting out of here. If it's the day before Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, however you figure it out, just figure it out and just let the public know what's happening. Also, when I was here, I had a couple of people that actually came in and wanted to pay their tax bill and everything. But they brought cash with them, right? Because you know, when you get a notice, your name is on the list. These people desperately want to pay their bill and get it out the way. But then they were told you have to leave and you have to have a cashier's check. We're not accepting any cash. But then we have no Mac machine here in City Hall. So there's just things that we need to think about. If we're going to be friendly towards the community and require certain things, then we need to put mechanisms in. We have parking that's not necessarily the greatest out front. So we just need to be a little more considerate. The administration needs to be a little more considerate when it comes to truly meeting the needs of the people and providing mechanisms to allow them to do what it is that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. CVP?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off on that same note. Because that was the main thing I wanted to talk about this evening was this tax lien sale that's now including water and sewer. And we understand that, you know, there is a state statute that says that whatever outstanding balances that people owe, whether it's property taxes, SIPs, which is like a special district in the city, and water and sewer. If you owe any outstanding balances by a certain date, then the city is authorized to put it on a tax sale. The issue that I have with that, and it may not be under any control of the administration, but the temporary closure of the online payment portal. I know that, you know, it says, the mayor has sent us a lengthy, you know, explanation of all of this. And I appreciate that. But maybe it's the language that's used that says during the legally defined tax sale period, municipalities must deactivate online tax payment portals to ensure proper verification and processing. That alone is causing a hindrance. And I want to know if that's a legal requirement to shut it down or if that's something that is strongly recommended? Because people work. People work and they cannot get here. And to that point, the tax and water slash sewer payment office here on the first floor, at the other end of the hall, closes at 3:30 PM. And myself coming here a couple of weeks ago, two days prior to a property that I was buying, at 3:28 PM, those doors were locked. No one opened those doors. And had I not been a council member, I would not have been able to get inside to simply verify what was owed on the property that I was trying to purchase. Because the title company could not get in touch with anyone on the phone. And with that being said, going back to this tax sale, residents are complaining that they cannot call in on the phone and get in touch with anyone. The problem is the office closed at 3:30. And people work until about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. The rest of City Hall closes at 4:30. What I'm not understanding is why is the tax and water payment office closing an hour before the rest of City Hall? And when I ask these questions, it's because this been the hours of operation since the pandemic. The pandemic has ended. And in fact, the moratorium lifted March 15, 2023. And the letter says that they haven't been able to do a tax lien sale for the last five years, which isn't true. For the last two and a half years, they've been able to collect on these bills. So now here we are and people have a hard time paying their bills, cannot get access online and cannot call either to see what their options are. So something must give with this. This created a huge inaccessibility issue. And I just wanted to say on the record, the house that I just closed on two weeks ago, the water bill for that single family house was $107,000 accumulated since January 2021. The moratorium was lifted March 15, 2023. So I'm not understanding why the water till this very moment is still on in the house. I still can't get it in my name, which is this is the third property I'm having this issue with, with the Water Works Department. I still can't get it in my name. Councilwoman Feliciano helped me get my first property in my name six years ago. And if it weren't for her, well, five years ago. If it weren't for her, I still would have been battling the department. So what is going on in Water Works billing collection? That I myself, as a council member, can't even get access to pay it. So a normal resident without any kind of entitlements can't get access to this office. And that is the problem that I have. So we need to fix this. We need to extend the hours of operation for that office. Because now you're giving people until mid-December, two weeks before Christmas, to pay their bills. And you need to create accessibility. Thank you. Now have a good night.
Thank you, CVP. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be very brief. Thank you, everyone, for being present. Thank you to the directors. Thank you to everyone who did do a Thanksgiving giveaway, turkey giveaway, all of those. Shout out to everyone that's doing toy drives. We have one coming up this Friday, December 5th, our annual toy drive. If you're able to join us, it'll be 6:00 PM at the Polish Democratic Club. Also, I just wanted to give a huge thank you to all of the Trenton Housing Authority employees and staff members who worked really, really hard on obtaining the junior one property and getting a choice neighborhood going. So I'm excited to see that come to fruition as it's been a lengthy, lengthy, long time coming. Also, I definitely want to shout out our rent stabilization board, Stephanie Register, and everyone that is on that board because they have been doing an excellent job with trying to actually mitigate between landlords and renters. And so I just wanted to say thank you to them because they've done a tremendous job with something that, you know, we put together on this council. So thank you to them and have a good night, everyone. Well, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano? Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.